Leader, yeah, we are ready when you are.
Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Cabinet meeting. My name is councillor Andorian, I'm the leader of the council and chairman of the Cabinet. And to my left is councillor Dale Broughton, deputy leader of the council and vice-chairman of Cabinet. Now, before we move into the preliminary items, I need to run through a few housekeeping details. I'd just like to remind everyone that we are being streamed live on YouTube. And anybody addressing the meeting would do, please do so through your microphone. Because that's the only way the comms can pick it up. Now, we'll move to part one of the agenda. Are there any apologies for absence?
There are none, madam chair.
Well, I've received one now from councillor Sandeep Ghosh. And he is at a very important event in India, so.
That's not it, thank you.
And does any member wish to declare any interest in respect of any item on the agenda? No declarations of interest? And do I have permission to sign the minutes of the meeting which we held on the 16th of January 2025? Thank you. Now, we're on to part two of the agenda items, recommendations from all review and scrutiny. Are there any for this meeting?
Probably the members of the public, we have none. So they were the members of the public questions, I don't know if you said the member of the public.
Oh, sorry, I beg.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, I just.
Were there any questions from members of the public?
There are none for this meeting, madam chair, thank you.
I thank you for keeping me right, Bea.
It's okay.
Any recommendations from overview and scrutiny?
There are none, madam chair, thank you.
Are there any recommendations from the Boston Town Area Committee?
There are none for this meeting, thank you, madam chair.
And now we're on to item three, which is the South and East Lincolnshire Council's partnership, private sector housing strategy. And I would like to ask councillor Baxter, if you would like to propose the report and propose the recommendations, please. So I present the report.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening councillors and officers. My pleasure to present the report on page five, item three on the agenda. The purpose is to set the context as to how the council intends to meet the private sector housing challenges and opportunities confronting the service, and to set out the key priorities for action and delivery. My thanks to the author Jonathan Challen, who can't be here this evening, but Emily Spicer, the assistant director, is here. So just to summarise then, earlier this year, the three housing standard teams from BBC, ELC and SHDC were brought together to operate as one single team across the partnership area. Whilst we have retained three area offices, the service now benefits from shared working arrangements of the three senior housing standards officers and a team leader, who are all authorised to work across the partnership area. This service realignment has provided resilience to the service and workers progress over the last six months to begin aligning the work carried out by the team. The next piece of this work then is the private sector housing strategy that's being built forward to the Cabinet today. So the strategy sets out the key priorities to review housing conditions, improve standards, tackle road landlords, and outlines the approach the service will take to overcome these challenges. The private sector housing strategy sets out four key priorities, which are raising standards in the private sector, maximising use of the existing private sector stock, regulating the private sector and collaborative working. So to develop this strategy, we have considered a number of key areas in the private housing sector on both a national and local scale, as well as the needs of the service. From this then, we have developed four outcome-based commitments. Commitment one, we proactively and effectively tackle poor conditions across the private housing sector. Commitment two, we will continue to work with partners, landlords and registered providers to ensure that homes meet required standards so that residents can thrive in a safe home. Commitment three, we will work effectively to reduce the number of empty homes across the subregion. And the final commitment four, we will tackle unlicensed HMOs across the subregion. The strategy provides a single corporate document that outlines the South and East Lincolnshire Council partnership's vision and ensures a point of reference, a counterability and governance to share approach to private sector housing. It should be noted that this is purposely designed and written to be a strategic document. If the strategy is adopted, there will be follow further operational policies and procedures to support its delivery across the subregion. For example, quite topical items like empty homes and HMO licensing, et cetera. So this strategy was discussed at Corporate and Community Committee on the 23rd of January, with support given to the document. And many questions asked, which had been taken forward, the subject took an hour. This process is being carried out then, also at the same as same time as us with our partners, East Lindsay and South Holland, on the 18th and the 20th of February respectively. So a fantastic document, well set out by the guys, and thank you for that. So if anyone had any questions, then we're open to questions, both Emily and myself, thank you.
Thank you, John. And do you want to move the recommendation?
I'd love to. So the recommendation is on page six, and it is to adopt the South and East Lincolnshire Council's partnership, private sector housing strategy, and to commit to supporting the delivery of the vision, priorities and commitments set out within it. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you have a second, councillor Butler, seconding that? Thank you very much. And well done. Would you, I'd like to open it now for questions for councillor Baxter. Does anybody have any questions? Callum, and then Dale.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Baxter for bringing this to Cabinet. I'm fully supportive of this, and I'm very pleased that HMOs have been featured in this, as we know, in the borough. And as these figures prove, we have a higher number of licensable, I don't think I've said that right, HMOs compared to the other three local authorities, with us having 132, as opposed to South Holland's 114 and East Lindsay's 56. Whilst HMOs provide a positive place for single people and other residents to live, they do also have, as we know, a negative impact on some residents in our community. So I'm pleased to see that we're going to be taking a stronger stance, or a stronger stance as we can rather, to make sure that they're fit for purpose. And I'm also pleased to see that the collaborative work in the councillor Baxter's team does with my team and other teams within the council, to try and reduce some of the antisocial behaviour and fly tipping and other issues that may resonate from some of these properties. Just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely right. I think that's a really good example where you see partnership working even just within the services in council, where you've got antisocial behaviour officers working with enforcement officers around fly tipping, working with the housing staff. Dale, what would you like to ask?
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to thank councillor Baxter and his team for this comprehensive report. And I know he works really hard along with his team, and this is a credit to both you and your team. I'd just like to, on page 20 and 21 about, again, carrying on from councillor Butler's HMOs, I noticed that HMOs that fall below the five-person threshold are not required to be licensed. Is that something that potentially could be looked at going forward in the future? Because potentially I could see that being a loophole for some getting away with.
Thank you councillor Broughton and councillor Butler. This goes back quite a long time, where certain members mentioned, well, several residents had mentioned, well, how HMOs affect where they live. There was a report a long time ago, we've done lots of research with the team as well, looking at Article Four, which is to do with planning, like in Peterborough and Lincoln, they could restrict areas and stop HMOs from sort of being created in those areas. Something as well that councillor Andorian picked up at a conference, do with selective and restrictive licensing. This is mentioned in the White Paper by Angela Rayner, and as I've covered with the team as well, something to be looked at. Councillor Isad was very proactive, councillor Butler and myself did research as well. So this is now on the timetable for the scrutiny committee to look at. And the officer, John Challen, is coming forward to talk to the scrutiny committee. So good points, but obviously the five-person threshold is dictated to by central government. Who knows, with all the things coming through, the changes that might alter. So yeah, valid points, and obviously these things are being taken forward, thank you.
I had a brief question, John, I wonder if you could talk us through, I think one of the things that really upsets our residents is when we've got unlicensed HMOs. And I wondered if you could talk us through, or Emily could, the kind of enforcement work that you can do where you have landlords that just won't be compliant with the legislation or won't work with us in a constructive way?
I could probably cover that because I speak to the team, we, it's only a small team, but they're very proactive. It's very difficult to obviously identify these people just by walking the streets. So we rely intelligence from the police, as councillor Butler mentioned, the guys who go round and look at the bins and things like that. So there have been several cases, most recently, I forget, I think it was at Lincoln, where somebody without a licence and also having lots of people sleeping in unhealthy conditions, they received a big fine. So as with any enforcement, we have to get evidence, which is sometimes difficult. But yeah, I'm very proud that the team look at this, but we do rely on people to mention it. So of course we can take it forward. The thing is, you can't just knock on the door and walk into a property, as you know. So we have to follow protocol and everything. But these are the things, it's quite a small team with limited resources, but they work very hard and also in line with housing standards. The fact that you might get 20 people living in a two-bedroomed house with no washing facilities, et cetera. So those are things that I'm proud that the team look at, thank you.
Thank you, that's very good. Do you want to come back, Callum?
I just wanted to say that I know councillor Baxter, as well as my team, rely on information from, that the public can give us, as much as other organisations and other bodies. So if the public do suspect a property to be an unlicensed HMO, if they could let us know, then we can investigate it. I know we've had, we've done that in certain locations in the town, thanks to the public being involved. And it has resulted in unlicensed HMOs being found, so.
Okay, great, that's a good method.
I would just mention as members, as you know, when HMO licences are approved, we get a note, don't we, of the address and everything, which makes us aware as ward members. But I know we've talked about this probably in a sort of negative point of view, but in a way, HMOs do solve a housing problem for a lot of our friends who come from overseas, who work on the land and in factories. And obviously, they provide, well, a roof over people's head. So it is also a positive thing as well that we have HMOs.
Yeah, absolutely right. Thank you for making that point. Okay, well, if everybody's asked what they want to ask, then we'll go to the vote, all those in favour. And that's carried unanimously, thank you, well done, John. Okay, so we're moving on now to the annual budget report, 2526. And I'm going to present this because councillor Ghosh isn't here, hang on. That's because I've lost my paper. Bear with everybody. Have you got a song? No, 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 I'll find it, I've got the papers here, I promise. I just need to find them. Oh, here they are, thank you, Christine. Thank you for bearing with me. So firstly, Cabinet colleagues, I would like to apologise for the lateness of this report being circulated to Cabinet. As you're aware, this is the second year in a row that the budget report has been presented very late. And personally, I don't think that's acceptable. So for that reason, I would like, through the chief executive, to invite Lewis Stockit, the chief executive of PSS, to come to our next Cabinet meeting, and, or briefing, I don't mind which, and explain to us why this has happened two years in a row. And I would like to know what his plans are for the future to prevent this from happening again. Because we did ask last year that it wasn't allowed to happen again, yet here we are. Are you able to do that, Rob? Thank you very much. So moving on to the budget report itself, the creation of next year's budget has been extremely challenging for Boston, with increasing costs such as pay, contract costs and the IDB levy, plus reductions in our support from government. This is at a time when we are seeking to support those who are most vulnerable in our communities. To create a vibe, we also are trying to create a vibrant district for our residents to live in. We're trying to help businesses to grow and to encourage visitor numbers to increase. Despite these challenges, as part of this budget, we are providing more support to our residents as part of the new council tax support scheme. And that's a scheme that I am particularly proud of, and I know that you are too, Cabinet, because that has the opportunity to make a real difference to children's lives and help lift them out of poverty. We are also enhancing events in the town, and this weekend's Boston Brilliance was a huge success, and in respect of which we should be very proud of our efforts. And congratulations particularly to Sarah Sharp for all the work you put in with that. Thank you, Sarah, it was a great effort, and you should be extremely proud of what you achieved. The Significant Capital Programme, funded mainly through grant, will see £4 to £8 million spent over the next five years on our local area, enhancing the town, improving the High Street, and working with our partners to drive growth and employment prospects. This is all hugely positive for our borough. Now, internal drainage boards continue to be an ever-increasing pressure with an additional requirement for £2526 of £102,000 included in this report. And this equates to a 45% increase since the year 2122. It's just ridiculous, and it's clearly not sustainable on a now £3 million a year bill for this borough to pick up. Cabinet will also be aware that the council has been in detailed discussion with government officials regarding this difficult position over the last two to three years. In addition to the Borough Council being a member of the special interest group, we are also aware that our local IDBs, internal drainage boards, have made extensive representations to members of DEFRA and via the Association of Drainage Authorities of this significant issue. Extra funding for councils increasing in 2526 to £5 million has now been confirmed by government as part of the final settlement, and in respect of which we are extremely grateful. But as such, as we stand today, the allocations are yet to be confirmed. So we know that the SIG members, I think there's 41 in total, will get an extra £5 million, but we don't know how much each council will get individually. Due to these pressures, we are proposing to increase our council tax by the maximum allowed, which is 3%, and equates to a £7.56 increase for a band D property, and that equates to 15 pence per week. The vast majority of properties, though, are in band A or B and band C. So the increases will actually be lower than those I've just read out. Now, we've included two efficiency targets in the budget. One in respect of the IDBs, and the second relating to a need for general efficiencies of £511,000. This will be very challenging, but we do have plans to address this. This budget also includes a new grant in respect of the Extended Producer Responsibility Funding. Some people will understand it as EPR, that we have been awarded for costs that we already incur in the waste system. And 50% or £473,000 of that is supporting the budget. And a further £400,000 support from the Funding Volatility Reserve, reflecting some of the income changes that have been seen in 2526. And we have yet to see whether these pressures extend into future years. Members' oversight of these efficiency savings, oh sorry, of this efficiency savings work will be undertaken with my, undertaken by myself, working along with councillor Ghosh, the finance portfolio holder. And we will be seeking to make better use of technology and buying power to drive savings, efficiencies and service transformation. Now, I'm going to move the report now, and I'll read the recommendations. I'm also going to move an amendment, or do I add it as a recommendation, Christine? About the councillor grant? Pardon? Add it to one?
Yes, if you add your recommendation to the end of one, we'll ensure that's incorporated for council, should it be approved.
Okay, so the recommendations are that Cabinet approves the following recommendations for onward referral to full council on the 3rd of March 2025. That the revenue estimates for the general fund and B-TAC for 2526, their appendices one, one A and one B, be approved. And that we also include, and council, we reintroduce the councillor grant scheme, awarding each ward councillor £1,000 to allocate to projects within their wards. And that we take that funding from the Vol, the contingency reserve fund, thank you, Christine, for that. Item two, that the council tax for a band D property in 202526 be set at £223.65, which is a £7.56 per annum increase on the current year. That the council tax for a band D property in 2526 for B-TAC be set at £81.09, which is a 72 pence per annum increase on this year's levels. That the additions to and use of reserves, as detailed at appendix one, be approved. That the medium-term financial strategy at appendix one be approved. That the capital programme and capital strategy, appendices two and three, be approved. That the section 25 addendum at appendix one be noted. That the Treasury Management Policy Statement and the Treasury Management Strategy Statement, including MRP policy, at appendix four A and four B, be approved. That the proposed fees and charges schedule are set out in appendix five, be approved. That the annual delivery plan for 202526 at appendix six be approved. And that Cabinet notes the results of the budget consultation process at appendix seven. And I look for a second, councillor Broughton, the seconded. Thank you very much for your forbearance, Cabinet, and I will now open the floor to questions. But due to the fact that it's not my portfolio, I'm going to defer all questions to the financial experts in the room. Thank you. And I'll start with councillor Baxter, then councillor Butler.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to thank the officers for all their hard work, I wish they could do my housekeeping and pay my bills. So I just wanted to raise a few things, obviously, this is quite complicated for us to sit down as members. There will be people watching as well, and sort of who will be thinking about this. So as I went through, I thought, as a resident, what sort of questions I'd be asking, lots of facts and figures. But I suppose when we talk about efficiency targets, it's going to be a challenge, et cetera. I suppose the people, our residents, will be thinking, are our services going to be cut? How's that going to affect the things that the council provided by way of services? So that would be my first question, please.
For you, Chair. So in terms of efficiencies, what we're looking at is where there's opportunities, certainly within the partnership, to share expertise. So potentially, you could procure something cheaper. So you're not getting less of a service, you're getting better value for that service. And similarly, in terms of procurement, by joining procurements up, and a good example of that at the moment is the leisure procurement that's underway, by making it a bigger offer, you get more interest in that, and therefore you may get a better price through that procurement process. And last but not least is the improvement in the IT that's been made over the past few years. We've seen significant efficiencies and also increase in resilience by sharing of systems and making the best use of those to do the hard work, rather than it being more manual or processes involved. So it's trying to look for those efficiencies and opportunities, some of them also are quite specialist. And I know you yourself are working on one with regards to housing benefit subsidy. It's about looking at where we could avoid cost, as well as where we might make it more effective. efficient. They are the initial focus. So the big drive as part of the efficiency plan for next year is the bedrock of the service reviews that are underway, looking for those efficiencies within services to make them more resilient and also better value for money. But then on top of that, procurement IT, and looking at those somewhat niche opportunities for avoiding cost, by either working better with partners or by assisting our partners to put themselves in a position whereby they're not costing us.
Thank you, and that will be managed, which is nice to know, but in a way, for the person on the street like myself, you pay her council tax, it's more back office, really, rather than the services that we offer out there, you're saying, Christine?
It is more toward, well, it is sharing expertise within front-facing services. Some of that you're already doing through your externalised contract with PSPS, a lot of those are front-facing in terms of customer services, but also in terms of things like regulatory services, where you've already looked at the service review around that, but then also other areas such as environmental services and your other service areas. So they are front-facing, but they're looking at those opportunities to maximise efficiency by working across the partnership.
Thank you. And can I ask one more, well, two more, Chair, please? I always relate this to me, who sort of saved up all my life or whatever, so I would hope I don't delve into my savings, but obviously the cost of living, et cetera. So when it comes to reserves, it's mentioned in page 89 in appendix one, and also other members obviously say you shouldn't delve into your reserves. So can I just ask from a finance point of view, I know you can't tell how the budget's going to go, but within this budget projection, there's no delving into the reserves at the moment?
There is a withdrawal from reserves for £400,000 from the Funding Volatility Reserve. So there's two new factors within your budget for 56. One is the use of the EPR funding, 50% of that is being used, the other 50% has been set aside to reserves, so you could pull that in. But also £400,000 from the Funding Volatility Reserve, which is trying to smooth some of the bumps in your income that you have at the moment. One of the more notable ones is business rates. So business rates at the moment's having a little bit of a difficult year because of all of the changes in the system that are taking place. So we've had to take a prudent view on bad debts in particular. That's had an impact on your income, so we're effectively smoothing that in 2526. What we don't know is whether or not 56 will be a bad year or it might be a better year. So when we come to do 67, all of those assumptions will be revisited. The other thing I would comment is your Q2 outturn is positive in terms of you have a surplus at the moment, and it's growing surplus potentially for Q3. I think it's probably likely that in 56, due to the cash balances you're holding, that'll probably be similar as well.
Thank you. It's just that, obviously, we see lots of local authorities getting into difficulty. Our reserves are what, £2 million, is it?
No, your overall reserves are more circa £12 million, so that's your overall. And when I've looked at your reserve levels, I've taken them in the round, because you have reserves there to deal with volatility, reserves to deal with your property funds. And again, we have plans in respect to your property funds, and those reserves will not be required anymore, should those property funds not be in place. So there's various flexibilities I've left in place for the incoming 151 to consider.
Thank you, Christine.
And John, there is another aspect to this, and that is that government expects us to use reserves, don't they? They don't want us to keep going with a begging bowl. There is an expectation from government that we depend now and again. Whilst I agree with you, it's not ideal, I think we are taking the most prudent approach that we can, you know, on behalf of our residents.
Especially when there's three grants that have been withdrawn as well, isn't there? Which means that our income flow gets reduced. So can I just cover one last question, thinking about probably, well, the people who we represent? It has been on social media, certain things have happened that this will reflect, well, for example, events and things like that, this will reflect on our council tax. So people might hear that ours has been increased by the maximum amount. I think it's important that we reflect, I know these are difficult times, it's only 15p per week for a band D, but also for people suffering financial hardships, as councillor Dorian has mentioned, we've implemented the council tax support scheme, but there is also council tax benefits as well that will help. So I think it's important that we communicate that to our residents as well. And I'll be quiet now, thank you.
Thank you, John. And was it you next, Callum?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Christine, for the budget. Firstly, I'd just like to say that, as the meeting side, I fully agree with what you were saying, councillor Dorian. One day is not long enough to read this report when it's over nearly 200 pages, it's just, it's physically impossible. So I just wanted to say that. Secondly, those that know me know I'm very passionate about the market, although it's not my portfolio, I still have a strong interest in it, having worked on it for many years. I'm very pleased to see that we are proposing a decrease in the charges to the market stores this year.
What page are you on?
Sorry, on page 203. With a proposed decrease for a regular trader of £7 to go to £15, I think that's fantastic. It'll make us one of the most competitive in the county, probably one of the more competitive in the country, I dare say. And I'm sure our market traders will fully appreciate that, and hopefully it will attract some more trade, which will then hopefully boost footfall. So, yeah, well done. I'm glad that we can do that.
Did you want to comment on that, councillor Popper?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Baxter, for bringing this point up. We have got a new markets manager whose initiatives, what we've come together with, and obviously we've listened to the traders, obviously their biggest issue has been, obviously, in hard times, paying for the rents and everything else. And we've looked at this, and obviously, we've listened to the traders, we've listened to residents who support the traders, and we feel this is a way of not only supporting the traders on the market now, but also getting a new influx of new traders. We've also got new initiatives, like the farmers' market's now been rebranded as to a farmers' and makers' market, we've already got people booking for that for the rest of the year. So again, hopefully, although we are reducing the prices, which is brilliant, hopefully it will bring more revenue into the council long term, because obviously we want the market back. The prices we had previously were competitive, but now these, I think there's only one market in the whole county now, which will be cheaper than this. So I'm really, really pleased that we've managed to do that, and hopefully the traders will see that we are working hard to support them, to support the town, and get the market back up and running as busy, hopefully busier than ever this year. But thanks for pointing that out, councillor Popper.
Thank you. Sarah, then Emma?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I did try to read this as fast as I could. You know, Christine, I have always been up on it about the auditors' fees. Have they increased much this year? Sorry if I've missed that within there.
So they have increased in line with the PSAA contract increases. What we're trying to do is make sure we proceed with the audit as efficiently as possible. So obviously, that will minimise and mitigate any extra fees we may incur. A more problematic audit causes more fees, but your statement of accounts are all up to date, they have all been audited, so I would expect to see normal audit fees for Boston.
Brilliant, thank you. And just really thanks now, I think that the IDB awareness that we're really trying to do, the Special Interest Group, I think gets more aware, and I think in that, the consultation, more people are aware of IDBs now, which is great. And just then a shout out to my officers, really, who are really trying hard to look for external grants that are available, and I'm really chuffed that Scott Higgins was successful with the swimming pool grant, he worked really hard on that, and if one thing's not quite going right, he'll look for something else that we can put that money into that pool, because previous administrations have not been keeping up to date, we're limping along to the regeneration works. And so, yeah, just thank you to my officers for that, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a really valid point you just raised there, and I think that I would recommend you do some comms around that, about how really for the last 20 years, perhaps longer, the Jeff Mulder Leisure Complex has been sadly neglected in terms of, it appears the maintenance that it's needed, and now we are left with a very, very difficult situation. So the old saying, a stitch in time saves nine, is very apt here. But I think that's for you, Sarah, I'm sure you'll take that forward in the right way. Emma?
Mine was just to comment on the consultation. So in appendix seven, it's page 265, I thought it was interesting that 55% of our residents didn't realise that Boston Borough Council, for every £10 of council tax, we only get 99 pence, and quite so much, 64 pence, goes to the Internal Drainage Boards. And the huge amount of residents who just did not, simply did not realise this, I just think that that's very telling, you know, just to make people realise how little we actually retain.
I think you're absolutely right, thank you for pointing out. I think the council should be really, really proud under Christine's stewardship, that this is a matter that the public are far more aware of than they've ever been. And it's right that you've done that, Christine, and thank you for taking a good lead on that. And there's no doubt that the Special Interest Group has had governments sit up and take notice. We must keep the pressure on, we must keep the message very much alive until we get a proper resolution. Callum, did you want to come back?
Just to say, just to follow on with the IDBs and with what councillor Baxter was saying about dipping into the reserves, I think we have to, because if we don't, it shows central government that we can manage, and we can't, not with the IDB levies as they are. So dipping into the reserves is the last resort, we have to do it, otherwise we struggle.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all that being said, everybody's asked and answered, everybody happy, so we will go to the vote. Are you all happy to move the recommendations forward to full council? That's clearly carried, thank you very much unanimously. Thank you, Jenny, I think you're finished now. Carl, do you want to go home? And you, Christine? You'll stay, okay. Now, item five is an update on the Guildhall Action Plan. The report starts on page 35 of the agenda pack, is that right? Yeah, okay. Councillor Sharp, would you like to present your report and propose the recommendations, please?
Thank you, Chair. The Guildhall Action Plan was approved by Cabinet in February last year. One year on, Cabinet is asked to note the progress of the action plan, to comment on any work that has taken place to date, confirm its continuation and any new actions. During this first year, 14 actions are on target, one is completed, five have mitigations to stay on plan, and one is no longer required. Importantly, it's pleasing to report tonight that visitor attendance figures are up 15% on this time last year, and in November we saw a 61% increase in visitors compared with the previous year. Work during the year has included increasing our range of merchandise and books, and the team are exploring possibilities for online sales of books and merchandise to extend the Guildhall's international reach. The installation of a card machine has helped sales and card donations to the museum. Income from resales and donations has started to increase over the past year, and with the introduction of the card machine and new merchandise, it's expected that this will continue to grow. We have relaunched our social media accounts to publicise the museum on a regular basis. For the past year, the team have benefited from the support of a communications apprentice who has relaunched the Guildhall's social media platforms on Facebook and Instagram to start reaching new audiences. New content is being developed to support a social media marketing campaign to promote the Guildhall as a wedding venue. This will also look at refreshing online and printed promotional content with new images. Importantly, the exhibition programme has been significantly developed as well. This has seen successful exhibitions such as Pilgrim Woman and the De Gola Exhibition, which not only attracted the attention of so many local people, it was also covered by ITV Calendar News, and they have in turn asked to be kept updated with our future exhibitions. The next exhibition, the 900th anniversary of the May Fair, is also causing a lot of excitement, and has been featured on the front page of the Boston Target and on the BBC News website. We also have another event, which at the moment is to be kept under wraps, but promises to be truly amazing, taking place later on in May. Successful hire events include Boston Preservation Trust's sell-out talks and the Society of Lincolnshire History and Archaeology Conferences. The National Portfolio Organisation funding from Arts Council has been hugely beneficial too, enabling procurement of museums and display cases, which will arrive next month, and will allow us to exhibit more of the collection and also exhibit items on loan from other museums to complement our exhibition programme, as well as developing our cultural programming and activities. We are continuing to work with our partners in the cultural quarter on joint events and initiatives to increase visitors in the town and develop an attractive offer for school trips. Two weeks ago, the Guildhall was the venue for the launch of the NPO's Zest Theatre Refresh Programme, and hundreds of primary school children visited throughout the day to celebrate the work they had done as part of this programme. Finally, Boston Guildhall took part in the Boston Brilliance event last weekend, hosting talks and giving visitors an opportunity to try VR headsets as part of the MBD, Metro Bulo Dodo Infinite Museum Project. Over the two days, 2,135 people came to the museum, many for the first time, and we were able to sell our new merchandise, and many visitors took the opportunity to donate. This report was taken to the Environment and Performance Scrutiny Committee last week, and members were supportive of the work that has taken place to date and provided suggestions for other elements we can incorporate into the plan. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all members and officers who are contributing to all the amazing things that are happening at our Guildhall. I would like to ask Cabinet to approve the recommendations as set out in this report on page 36. Number one, to consider the report and its appendix and note the progress made in realising the ambitions of the approved Guildhall Action Plan. And number two, to confirm the continuation of the work of the action plan and confirm any new actions. Thank you.
And do you have a seconda? Councillor Creswell, seconded, thank you. And I'll now open the floor to questions. Callum, and then Do.
Thank you, Chair. It's fantastic to see that visitor numbers have increased, and we've got a card machine there, and there's going to be actual display cabinets. I think it's the little things, just, yeah. Has this also resulted in an increase in takings at the Guildhall as well, do you know?
Yes, we have had an increase, and especially quarter three is proving really good. Yep.
Thank you, and Do?
First of all, I'd just like to thank all the hard work and dedication that councillor Sharp puts into this Guildhall. I know she's so passionate about it, and that's reflecting obviously on the staff, and obviously everything that's happening there. I think it's been a long time since the Guildhall has had such a dedicated portfolio holder as yourself, so your results are shining through, so well done. Just a couple of points I'd like to make, councillor Sharp. The first one, again, there's no red off-target concerns, which again is an absolutely brilliant achievement, well done. Regarding the, on page 44, regarding the weddings and being limitations on toilet facilities and preparation areas, obviously, that potentially could be quite easily resolved by portaloos and outside catering firms. I think the Guildhall is an absolutely beautiful place for weddings and everything, and I see that as being a big money earner for the Guildhall, especially with certain establishments potentially having to shut for a certain time. I think, have we got an actual comprehensive list of all the prices, the facilities that you offer for weddings and everything else? Is that available?
The charges are really sort of bespoke, it depends on what day, are we already open? Do we need any extra staff? How many hours do they want it for? So it's not really a set in stone price, but it's definitely something the team would work with, yeah.
And secondly, just again on the opening hours, obviously, now you're getting better, busier, more people want to come, you're obviously going to have all these display cabinets for, is there any way we could look at increasing, because it says it's only open 20 hours? Is there any chance that we can look at using like the volunteer scheme, as I know other museums throughout the country use them to actually bulk up the hours that we can open? Because obviously, the more successful you are, more people's going to want to come. Obviously, Boston Brilliance this weekend, you had that many people go through it, so obviously, word's going to spread about. So I just think Wednesday to Saturday could be extended. I think Sunday would be a perfect day, a lot of people, days off work, off school, everything, and with all these things you've got planned going ahead, I think that's something that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, definitely. Now the visitor numbers are increasing, the exhibitions are increasing, and all those things are taking place, that gives us more of a case to open for longer, and will definitely be looked at.
Thank you. Well done again.
Just on that, I've got a challenge for the public, and it's this, I had a resident, one of the residents came to see me this week for a cup of tea, and they complained that the signage wasn't very good to the Guildhall, and I said that we were looking at that, the levelling up partnership has got a project that's looking at signage throughout the town. But I did ask the resident, when was the last time you were in the Guildhall? And the answer was, when they were a child. And this resident was, obviously, they're in the 70s. So I think my challenge is to residents, is if you are one of those local people that hasn't been to the Guildhall since you were in primary school, I think you should go and visit again. I think you should go and visit again and refresh your memory and just see how wonderful the exhibitions are. But if you would just help me out here, Sarah, can, do you know off the top of your head exactly when it's open?
Wednesday through Saturday, 10:30 to 3:30.
There you go. Wednesday through Saturday, 10:30 to 3:30. So that's when you can go. And I think the most important point I'd like to make to residents is it's absolutely free of charge. There's no pressure on you from customer services or volunteers in the building to buy anything, to donate anything. You can just go and enjoy the space and wander at the marvel of this beautiful building. John, thank you for waiting. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, mainly comments really. First of all, a big thank you to councillor Sharp, Luke and Phil. But most of all, the staff there. I visit the Guildhall quite regularly and visited twice on the two days of Boston Brilliance. And same as people who know me, I'm not a shrinking violet and chat to everybody. And the volunteers were brilliant. And what I was going to mention is it's okay to look at action plans with orange and green and stuff, but it's still good to see people enjoying the Guildhall. Most of all as well, when I chatted to people, some of them don't normally go down that end of town. And of course, Boston Brilliance brought them to that end of town. And as you say councillor Dorian, it's up to us to spread the word. When I have visitors come to see me or even people in our villages, we take them round the Guildhall because we're proud of their, obviously heritage. But I, I chatted to people as well, some, they weren't all from Boston. I chatted to people from Suffolk, Essex, London. They combined it with visits to Fidel House and the Stump. Sometimes, of course, people go to the stump because it's pretty obvious where the stump is, but sometimes don't go to the Guildhall. I think it's important by word of mouth then, we tell everybody, maybe the signage as well. But obviously, the number of visitors, I mean, the Ron Diggins exhibition was brilliant and all the different things planned and everything. It's good to know then the numbers are up and I think that's all credit to the staff involved.
Yeah, absolutely right, John. Thank you. Anyone else? No, well, I would echo Dale's comments about your passions here. I mean, it shines through. You ooze passion for the Guildhall. Yeah, boring. So well done, because it's having an impact and you're making real positive changes there. So well done. Well done to all the staff involved. Thank you for your commitment and your efforts and to the staff who work there. So the report's been moved and seconded. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. And now we're on to the last item on the agenda, which is item six, Boston Markets and Severe Weather Policies. The report starts on page 271 of the supplementary agenda pack. Councillor Broughton, would you like to present and propose the recommendations?
Thank you, honourable Chair. Following the implementation of the Boston Markets Development Plan, the market service has undergone a full review. This review has highlighted the need to review current market and severe weather policies as a priority as the service evolves, to ensure the market is operated efficiently, consistently and safely. This report details the draft revised and new policies for the service. The purpose of the market and severe weather policies is to set out the matters that the council will take into account when considering and undertaking its duty to provide and manage its markets. Market policies are reviewed annually to update fees and charges and minor changes to wording. But following the, the review of the service, it was determined that a wider review of the policy was also needed. The review of the markets policy was undertaken with extensive research of other local authority markets policy and draws on best practice from them all. The policy also considers an increase of traders that doesn't necessarily have English as their first language. So it aims to make the policy terms clearer, using uncomplicated, basic wording as much as possible. The policies report was presented to EMP scrutiny on Tuesday, the length of February and received no formal recommendations. Within the draft market policy, some of the principal changes to consider concern the following. There was a new requirement for new traders to provide risk assessments if using their own stalls or equipment. New incentives added for new casual traders and traders that haven't traded at Boston Market for 12 months. Charity stall to be allowed to stand for free once a quarter instead of just once a year. There was a debt repayment warning added to remind traders of timely payments of invoices. And late invoice payments are to be strictly monitored with disciplinary proceedings for those breaching the policy. We've increased the holiday entitlement by one day and has been made clearer, with inclement weather day entitlement now doubled. Significant changes have been made to the disciplinary procedures and the conduct section. Information on selling secondhand goods on the market has been added. Information on the provision of electric and generators used on the market. Erection and dismantle times for the new gazebo is added. Trading hours have been reduced by 30 minutes, but instead a strict compliance to not pack away until 30 minutes prior to core trading hours have ended. Feedback from traders is that customers' behaviour has changed over the years, with most of their customers attending the market earlier, leaving trade past 2pm very quiet. Emergency procedures have been added. Health and safety inspection form for market officer dismantling instructions for council staff and trader application forms removed from main body of the market policy. A severe weather policy is removed from the main body of the market policy and now it's our own document as advised by a health and safety manager. Within the draft severe weather policy, some of the principal changes to consider concern the following. The severe weather policy draft at appendix three now demonstrates clearly how the markets team determine when and how the decision to restrict or close a market is taken, acknowledging it can cause a lot of disruption with the potential for financial and logistical impacts for all concerned. A decision-making matrix is shown within the policy for traders to view. A new, more formalised severe weather policy has been drafted in collaboration with a health and safety manager to mitigate against the changing weathers throughout the year. The policy now sets out clear new conditions for traders using equipment during a restricted market, again approved by a health and safety manager. The policy also now provides a stated time and day when decisions for markets will be made, ensuring traders receive sufficient notice in advance. This is specifically put in for traders who purchase perishable goods, so as no one is out of pocket due to the weather. It has been proposed that now only the Met Office weather app will be used to ensure a fair and consistent approach to decision-making. It maintains the key priorities to protect the council's reputation, the public, traders and staff safety in the event of any severe weather, which would affect any open air market or event operated by Boston Borough Council. The draft market policies have been reviewed and updated in line with the evolving market service and best practice and are presented to Cabinet for approval. So I therefore recommend to Cabinet to approve the draft market policy. All right, so yeah, I recommend to Cabinet to approve the updated markets policy at appendix two and severe weather policy appendix three as provided in this report. Thank you.
Seconda from John Baxter. Thank you very much. Well done, Dale. And I'll take a question from Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dale, and thank you to you and your office for all this hard work that's just really tightening up this policy and doing a lot to really, really just promote our market, such an important element of what is Boston. I particularly like the trading hours being set in stone so that residents might think at the minute, oh, I won't go up in the afternoon, they might not be there still. They know they're going to be there. So it gives those people the opportunity. Just a comment really for page 298, when you're asking people to fill in the form there, rather than just Facebook page. I just make it a bit more modern and put in social media pages. I know my daughter says older people use Facebook, so maybe Instagram, TikTok. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Yeah, I've made a note of that and I'll pass that on. But again, we've listened to the traders again, who said that after 2pm, the market's really quiet, but they're really busier in the morning. So we're very welcoming to the traders. We're listening to them. Obviously, earlier on councillor Butler said about the reduction in the rents. We're listening to them on the hours that they want to work as well to make it more viable for them all. There's no point standing there, especially some of them are getting a little bit older in the cold weather when they know that nobody's going to come. So again, we're listening to the traders and we're pushing things forward.
Councillor Baxter then, Butler?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Dale and also David and Phil for this document. As an administration, I like to think, I think we know really, we listen to comments from our residents. And of course, social media is very important. So there have been several comments made about the, the number of stalls, the severe weather, the charges and also location at Christmas. So I'm really pleased on page 273, it mentions the policy makes it clearer and accessible as possible, also a severe weather policy. So it's tying up the loose ends and I welcome that. Just to mention, recently when I've been up to the market, the guys are very visible, David, David and the markets manager. Some residents came up to me with a query, why was it cancelled sometime etcetera. So I took them over to David and the other markets manager. They were amazing. But they also said, these residents come up every Wednesday and Saturday. If you see us, come and have a chat, any suggestions. So I think that is the way forward really. But what it boils down to really, well, the Facebook site as well, I think is really good, which advertises the specialist markets and topical subjects. But I, I think basically we have to keep saying, if you don't use it, you lose it. So it's okay for people saying, oh, our market isn't very good. They probably haven't been to other local places nearby. I think our market's amazing, the traders and everything, the relationship they have with residents. But I think it's important we keep emphasising, well, basically, if you don't come uptown and use the market, then you'll lose it. So thanks to all the guys for all the hard work.
Thank you for that, John. I'll pass it on. Again, it infuriates me when people say, oh, Boston Market's dying and everything else. We are still one of the busiest markets in the county. And obviously these new actions we put in, plus it's not in the policy because it's not to do, we've got new POS coming in, new advertising. The social media pages have all been updated. As you've said quite correctly, that the markets manager and the, the market supervisor are present there for not only the traders, but the residents, as you found out last week, John, speaking to them. And everybody wants the same thing. We, we all want the market to succeed. Obviously, market conditions have changed with buying online and everything. But we, we believe we've got a structure in place now that's going to push Boston market forward. Obviously, the teenage market, again, we've got new traders coming from that who's decided to go from the teenage market up to this. The new makers and farmers market have already got a massive interest and that's only been advertised in the last week. We've already got people booking for that throughout the year. So we really believe this year Boston market will flourish, get busier and hopefully more traders will come. At, at the minute, we've got traders coming from Loughborough. So they're not coming all that way and not having faith in us. They do want the market to succeed. They've, they've had doubts in the past that we're not interested. I can guarantee here and now, myself, all the team and the markets team want this to succeed and we will do everything we can to make it flourishing.
Callum?
Just a couple of points really. Thank you, Chair. Firstly, just to echo what councillor Baxter and councillor Broughton have said, Boston Marketplace is one of the biggest marketplaces in the country. We've still got at least 30 traders, I think, week in, week out. Yes, they don't turn up when they're on holiday. Yes, they don't always turn up if it's absolutely siling it down. Anyone can go and stand in that marketplace on any day and get a picture and say, oh, the market's dying. But the same, same regard, they can turn around 90 degrees and see a flourishing market. It's all about the eye of the beholder. I note that, obviously just following what councillor Sharp has said about the trading hours being reduced to two o'clock because of the lack of trade in an afternoon, which I think is a sound decision. I know the traders suffer, gone are the days when you could still be stood there at half five in the evening and the stall erectors wanted to boot you off so they could go home. Should trade pick up at any point? Would those hours be looked to be extended again?
Obviously, again, we will listen to the traders if, if the plan is that we get new traders coming in, new businesses coming in. And obviously then we will generate more footfall and it's more than welcome for the hours to be extended. Obviously in the summer, the hours will probably be extended anyway, because obviously lighter nights and people like that. So yeah, the idea is not to limit it to two o'clock. We want it back to like three, four o'clock because there's that many people coming into shop and that, that's, that's the idea. All these policies that we produce for the market are flexible. We will listen to people, we'll listen to residents, we'll listen to the traders. And obviously going from there, if they want extended hours, we're more than happy to accommodate that.
Okay, everybody finished? Thank you very much. Well, the report's been moved and seconded. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously, Bea. Thank you. So that brings us to the end of the, this evening's cabinet meeting and I will close the meeting. Thank you all for your attendance.